Good evening, everybody. Lowell City Council Personnel Subcommittee will hold a public hearing. Today's date is Tuesday, May 26th. The agenda tonight is a discussed vote of authorizing to file special legislation relative to the appointment of the Civil Service Fire Chief in the City of Lowell. Roll call, please, Mr. Clark.
Chairman Belanger.
Here.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yeah.
Counsel Samaras.
Yeah.
Three present.
Thank you. Well, as discussed at the council meeting approximately a month ago, it was voted to delay this vote for further information, and Counselor Kennedy has taken the time to call the State Department of Civil Service and get some additional information. So Counsel Kennedy, if you don't mind, I'll open it up with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought that before we take the Fire Chief position out of Civil Service, that it made sense to at least look at what other options are available through the Civil Service Commission. And as you stated, I called and they sent down, and there are three other options that are a little bit more, maybe a little bit more complex than the way that the Fire Chief was selected this time. But I think there's two issues. I think, one, there are some people that have said that the process was somewhat tainted because there was only one person that took the test, and so there was only one person that was available for the position. But I think beyond that, there's also the issue of having the Fire Chief be a direct report to the city manager. And I think that maybe that's something that needs to be looked at as well. And so, in the time that I've had to look at the three different options that are available through the Civil Service, the question that keeps coming back to me is, why is it in the best interest of the city to keep it in, to keep the job under the Civil Service Commission? And I think that probably, like the police chief, that it probably isn't in the city's best interest to keep it under the Civil Service Commission, and that maybe it's time to move this position out of there as well. And so unless I hear a reason from somebody on the Subcommittee or anybody at all as to why that's a good idea, I'm leaning towards adopting the city manager's recommendation, which would be to take it out of Civil Service and just have the city manager make the appointment.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for doing due diligence, staying, coming up with additional information. It is an important vote, and obviously, the council voted unanimously to postpone the vote for additional information, something that is important to this. But the chair would also like to recognize Counselor Dan Rooks on hand today. Counsel Jimmy Melonazzo and city manager Murphy have joined us here as well. So Counsel Samaras, any comments?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Counselor Kennedy for the extra information. It really doesn't change the process that much. It does talk about the addition of an assessment center, helping to evaluate, you know, the next Fire Chief. But when we talk about the best interests of the city, I think we also talk about the work of the city manager. And I believe that if we're going to hold the city manager accountable, we have to allow him to make the choice of those people who will lead the various departments. Two departments that I'm most concerned about is fire safety and police. And with that said, it's if we expect the manager to do the job that we're talking about, because I think when the city council, when many of us ran as, to be a member of the city council, safety was a paramount issue. It still is, it will be every day of our lives. There's no question about that. And when we talk about police safety and fire safety, we're talking about crisis management, as far as I'm concerned. And when we talk about crisis management, we're talking about the city manager's ability to work with his team in the event of not only fires and some type of use of crime on the streets, but floods, storms, you know, those type of things that require so much of a city to become, to bring the city together to do what's necessary. So basically, you know, when you talk about the Fire Department, as far as Civil Service is concerned, I think Civil Service has been very important in bringing online policemen and firemen who are qualified and knowledgeable. But at the final step, that manager who will manage everyone, I think the city manager must have that call. And at this point, I see no other reason for me not to support the issue of developing special legislation to appoint a non-Civil Service Fire Chief, as we've done with the Chief of Police in Lowell. I think that's worked out very well. And at this point, for the citizens of Lowell, I think this is overall a best approach. And I'm not saying, and when I say it's not the best approach, I'm not saying that the approach was a problem, the previous approach. We've had many good chiefs, both in the Fire Department and Police Department, but I think our times are changing, times are different, and we have different needs that require strong leadership at the manager's position, and the manager must have a team that he can work with. That's my...
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Some very good points. Counsel Melonazzo, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in. At this point, I still have not changed my mind, and I don't believe I'll be supporting the city manager's request to move this out of Civil Service. I think that we do have options at the state, and I think it's important that the Fire Department, as I mentioned in my remarks a month or so ago, it's different than the Police Department, in my opinion. They live together, they dine together, they basically spend a lot of time together. And I think that the way it has worked in the past, I think, has worked fine. And I know that we moved the police chief out of Civil Service back a few years ago, and I have the utmost respect for the three chiefs that have been there since they moved them out of Civil Service, but I'm not 100% sure that that's actually been, it's actually worked well. I think overall, it probably has, but there have been morale issues in the Police Department that I don't think would have been there if it was kept in Civil Service, and I just don't want that same thing to happen over at the Fire Department. That's just, again, just my opinion. So again, I certainly will hear the city manager's, again, reasons for wanting to move it out, but I think that Counsel Kennedy's good research, good work that he did receive from the, from Civil Service. There are opportunities to keep the exam, to keep it within Civil Service, and really get the best person for the position. Was the process tainted the last time? Unfortunately, it was, but I don't think that's the first time that that actually has happened. And we have, in my opinion, had good Fire Chiefs race, rise through the ranks here in Lowell. So at this point, I couldn't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Very good. Counsel Rook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in looking at the options, with the belief that the purpose of Civil Service is to find the best candidate out there, I mean, what the position is, I think that's the reason why we do have it. I would echo Counsel Melonazzo's remarks concerning the differences between the Fire and the Police Department. You know, and being a Counselor and getting to know public safety officers in the city, you know, and no disrespect to the police, who do a great job. I do notice in the Fire Department, the closeness and the brotherhood that they do have over there really does mean a lot. And looking at the options that we do have here, you know, number two piques my interest, where it takes multiple criteria into effect. I guess one question I do have is, you know, with the expectation of the city manager, I would like to have him to have some final say in the matter. I know when I spoke to Civil Service with the, using of an assessment center, they had said that they go through a process, and multiple candidates could be forwarded to the city manager for a final selection of that person. So, you know, I was hoping someone from Civil Service would be here today, but knowing that wasn't possible. You know, I do have a couple of further questions about it, but, you know, something where, you know, there is certain criteria that need to be met for someone to even take the exam, and then for the manager to have the selection, you know, to give him the authority, because he is running the city day to day. So I do appreciate both sides of the argument, and everyone that listens as well. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. It's a good option. I don't know how possible it is, or feasible, if you will. You know, I see what you're trying to come up with, that middle ground, to have, quote, "the best of both worlds," so to speak. And it would be a good compromise, I guess, if it's achievable. But, Mr. Manager, to you, could you reflect on Counsel Rook's point there somewhat? And if it is possible, still keeping Civil Service, and you still to have the final say, if you will, is that doable?
Well, I think my track record so far in the one-year-plus, as far as assessing people for jobs in the City of Lowell, has been pretty good. So I think our work in interviewing candidates and choosing the right person is the best assessment model for the Fire Department in the future. And rest assured, I will look to the Fire Department, the Lowell Fire Department first, to seek a new Fire Chief, including the deputy chief, who was the name on that list. As a matter of fact, as you're probably aware, I did appoint him the interim chief, because I had confidence in his ability to assume those ranks and to run that department effectively. But however, there is another aspect of taking it out of Civil Service, and that is the accountability piece. You know, the law right now allows for contracts between city employees, like a Fire Chief, and that will give the Fire Chief job security, but it doesn't give him the perpetual protection that Civil Service gives to a Fire Chief. And I just believe that if a Fire Chief is under a contract, there's more accountability to that Fire Chief than the perpetual protections of Civil Service. And that's why I think that we should pursue the special legislation to exempt them from Civil Service.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anybody from the audience like to chime in on this? Mr. Keen?
Chairman, city manager, councilors, I just wanted to run a few remarks. Wanted to listen to what everybody had to say, and there were definitely some good points made. One of the issues, it kind of goes hand in hand with perhaps the opposite of accountability, is a bit of job security for that position. It can actually discourage a qualified candidate if that person is 50 years old, for instance, and doesn't, the contract that he gets isn't going to put him in line to retire properly. So he has to take into account his family life, what is he going to do to his retirement itself, is it going to be scaled back? So that part of job security is an issue. So sometimes you get a guy who's younger, that's very qualified, you know, the current chief right now, I believe, has been a deputy for probably seven or eight years now. So if this opportunity had come up back then, not in Civil Service, it would be something that you wouldn't be interested in, because you're just playing too young. As Counsel Rook stated, you do have an option of utilizing an assessment center, that's absolutely through Civil Service, a method you could utilize. I mean, I'm of the opinion, quite frankly, in the city, the most qualified person comes from the Lowell Fire Department, without a doubt. And I personally, and again, obviously, I'm prejudiced, I've been a Lowell firefighter for 19 years, but we're very unique. What I've seen happen in other communities is you get, I kind of refer to them as, almost like a resume-building gunslinger type of chief. They go to all the right classes, when you look at the paperwork, they look really good on paper, but half of them never set foot on a fire ground. They've never traveled down that same hallway that, for instance, Deputy Winwood, who is now the chief, has. He hasn't done that in Lowell. There's no tie to the City of Lowell. So that's, and again, I'm not necessarily jumping ahead and assuming that the manager's going to leave the city for the job, but that's the potential, that's what we have to look at, looking forward. We can't just look at this one instance. I mean, this is a very important decision that you have before you. So again, that's really all I had to add. I appreciate you allowing me to speak, and again, you have a big decision in front of you, so thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much, Mr. Keen, and I know it comes from all this entire Subcommittee, that we appreciate what you do. And I think that would come from all nine counselors, so thank you. Anybody else like to chime in on this? Counsel Kennedy?
Yeah, let me just, at the risk of being somewhat redundant, let me just chime in and say that I agree with Counsel Rook. I probably, if we were going to keep this position in Civil Service, or if I was going to vote that way, I'd probably vote with the weighted, graded method, because I think that that's probably the best way to go of these three. And maybe if we had done that this time out, maybe we wouldn't be faced with this issue right now. But I think that more than the way the selection process went along is the accountability issue, and that's the issue that really is swaying my vote, much more than anything else. And so, and let me just ask this, with the interim chief right now, if he would be appointed, and he would be appointed without the, without Civil Service?
Correct.
If we take this out of Civil Service? Okay. And so I think that, you know, I think that there's no reason usually going forward to go outside of the Lowell Fire Department for the chief, but I do think that one of the things that this, that if we do take it out of Civil Service, one of the things that could happen is that anybody in the Lowell Fire Department that thought they were qualified and that was interested in the position would be able to apply for the position to the city manager, and we'd be able to do that with some confidentiality. And so that's another thing to look at. I think that maybe, I'm not sure that the position is always open to everybody right now, but certainly, if it, if we take it out of Civil Service, it would be.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else?
Yes, thank you. And I want to thank Lieutenant Keen for his observations. The one thing, you have handled yourself in a very professional manner, and I really appreciate that. As Counsel Kennedy stated, the weighted method, I mean, was appealing, but when you talked about the issue of job security, I'm thinking, I understand it very well, because I was a tenured high school principal, and I lost my tenureship, you know, when the Ed Reform Bill came in. And, but once, you know, you get over the initial shock of looking at it, I was given my contracts, but the thing is, it was very clear, I was now becoming more of a team player than I was as an individual high school headmaster, because the thing is, the superintendent, he or she made the overall decisions, but we're able to work together. So I understand your apprehension, because I felt it personally, and at first, it wasn't pleasant, but then you get to realize why it was done, what it was done for, and it was really to ensure that the superintendent had the team that he or she needed to have. Accountability, when I talk about accountability, your people are accountable no matter what, but I just think life is changing in such a fashion that we're dealing with not the regular fire situation or the police situation, but we're dealing with out west, the storms that they've been hit with, something else to be concerned with. And so, fire safety, police safety, it all changes, and I think you need to have a type of team that's together, that can anticipate those type of issues, work out their plans, and be ready. Not to say as individuals, they wouldn't be. And, but the thing is also, my expectation, Mr. Manager, would be that you would be looking within the Fire Department, Lowell Fire Department, for those people, because they certainly are there. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a deputy that receives a job, it could be a captain or lieutenant, somebody who's displayed those skills. And I understand what Mr. Keen talks about, there are, we'll say, people, professional interviewers that are out there that can, you know, sell you, they could sell a bridge. But the thing is, I think, knowing your record, Mr. Manager, what you're trying to do, what this city council is trying to make you accountable for, in order for you to do your job the way we would like it to happen, I would still, at this point, support taking this out of Civil Service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The chair would like to acknowledge Counsel Lahey, who just walked in. Counsel Lahey, would you like to add in on this?
Sure. Thank you. I apologize for being late. So I'm not sure what already happened. Do we hear from the Fire Department?
Yep. Lieutenant Keen, I'd already spoken. He can, Lieutenant, would you mind coming back up to the podium and...
Well, was there anybody here from Civil Service also?
No.
Not today?
No.
Okay. I'm fine. Thank you.
No.
My thoughts on this are just that, you know, it's not, it's not that I'm against the notion of letting a manager handle the hiring or of this superintendent as we do with the Police Department. My thoughts are that I think that the Fire Department is a unique situation, it's a lot different from the Police Department. My observations over the years as a school committee person and as a Counselor is that I see that the Fire Department, to me, seems very disciplined. They have a special bond, a trust, that they, that develops over the years. I think that this is a unique situation. I feel that this strong trust that they have for each other, and the dedication to the job, and the discipline to their duties allows them to let people climb the ranks, and they like that. And from what I observed, they want people to climb the ranks, and they want them to mature with time, they want them to get the wisdom, so that when they're ready to become chief, they're ready for that position. I think it also allows us to let people be hired from within the department. I mean, this is a career of, could be 25, 30 years, and you cap off that career being Fire Chief, if you want it, because a lot of people don't want that last step. It takes a unique person that wants that step. So, you know, when this came to light, sure, there were a couple of mistakes made, but I think overall, by taking this away from the Fire Department and putting it into the hands of any manager who's here at the time, would be a mistake. I think that we should allow the Fire Department to groom their own, and let them rise through the ranks and become chief of Lowell. I think when we start selecting, and I've heard different arguments that, you know, there could be somebody that's a captain or lieutenant that has the qualifications to be a Fire Chief, and that's all good and well. But again, the Fire Department is a very disciplined, unique organization, and they want their own to climb the ladder, and they want people to become chief when they reach the deputy position. And also, I think that, you know, maybe throughout the years, we're going to get younger and younger guys. So someone comes into this position, and they don't have Civil Service behind them, they could be a young guy at 48, get a three-year contract, and the politics in Lowell change, and they're out of a job. They can't come back to the department, once they're chief, they can't come back into the union, it's my understanding. You're out of the union when you become chief. So here's a guy, spends his last three years in Lowell, he's too early, too young to retire, but for whatever reasons, he's out of a job. And, you know, that's not right either. So I think this is a big decision, I think we have to really take a good, hard look at it. And it's really not, you know, it's not really speaking out against the administration, it's just something that I feel strongly about. I feel that, again, from observing these, this department over the years, there's never been any ill effects from the choosing of a Fire, the Chief of the Fire Department. It's decided, the rank and file like it, they accept it, and from day one, the Fire Department is a unit, is one again, and they move on like that. And that, you don't see that with all departments, and I think there's a lot to be said for that. So I just would like us to consider this. It's not a bad idea taking it out of Civil Service, but I don't think it's the right thing to do right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Some great points, and some great points all around this afternoon, I might add. But, you know, absorbing it all, including, you know, last month's debate here at the council floor, and Counsel Kennedy's additional information that he's sought out and submitted to all of us. I'm still, you know, where I was a month ago on this, that is, taking it out of Civil Service and letting the manager vet and let the manager manage. These are personnel that we're going to be holding him accountable for. And I just, as Counsel Kennedy alluded to, that I don't know that this, how this would be in the best interest of the city to leave it. And to Counsel Lahey's and Counsel Melonazzo's made some great points as to how long the system has been going on, you know, these deputies, if you will, when it comes time to take a test. And before I say this, I just want to let that, this is something I have no proof of, and it's strictly my theory of potentially what could be happening, is, you know, you have hypothetically four deputies on a table, you know, conceding to one another, saying, you know, Fred, John, you deserved, you've been on the longest, you know. So I want to make abundantly clear that I have no proof of this whatsoever, this is just, and it's a very sincere, noble thing to do, no doubt. So I commend the Fire Personnel for having the system the way it's been for this amount of time, and there's never, ever been an issue, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. But in the end, does that mean the city is getting the best candidate? And that's, to no disrespect to Mr. Winwood here, who's the only finalist, may very well be the best candidate for the job, I don't know. The manager seems to have a lot of confidence in him, he's appointed him as a temporary chief, and he may very well be our next chief. I don't know. But what I do know is I want the manager to be part of this process, I really do. And, you know, it's a huge responsibility that I just don't think should come down to a test score. I think that should be a factor, but not the deciding factor. There's other things involved. I want experience, I want budgetary experience, you know, that's what the times we're in, as Counsel Samaras alluded to, there's other aspects involved in this job. And we want to get the most well-rounded candidate, in my opinion. So, you know, it's a hard decision, really. I've sorted out, and I tried to absorb all the information I can, and I appreciate the comments of Mr. Keen, who spoke this afternoon, and, but just in the end, I want the manager to have the final say, and that's where I stand. So I'll go to Counsel Rook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, and hearing your remarks, you know, well said, you basically described option two to a T. You know, multiple factors are taken into account, experience, education, testing, you know, I mean, it just, you know, what you said is, describes section two. You know, in regards to our current manager, you know, one of his most positive things he's done as the manager has, he's hired low people, you know, he's going to have his way to pick the best qualified candidate in a low area, and that, you know, that's, should we congratulate on, that won't change for, you know, if he's manager for a week or for 10 years. So that's, you know, one of the positive checkmarks that he has, that I'm most proud of him having. But again, getting back to this particular, you know, with taking it out, I think that if you look at the three options, if the manager does have a say, and who that person would be at the end, I don't see the negative, I don't see the harm of totally pulling it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rook. Counsel Lahey?
Thank you. I just want to add to that, for most of the reasons that you spoke of are the reasons why we should leave it alone, because they groom their own. There's a trust... There's a trust, and that bond should not be broken. They spend 30 years on a career here, education, they trust each other, they're climbing the ladder, and that bond is, is a strong bond that shouldn't be broken. You know, no disrespect to the manager's position, but managers and city councils come and go. But these men and women put 30 years plus, and this is why we should let them decide as they climb up the ranks, who they think and who they know are the leaders for these, for this position. You know, it's, it's easy for us to say that, you know, I have two candidates, and I'm going to decide who's better, but I haven't worked with these people. These guys have worked with each other, and it's, and in this case, the one person that wanted the, the position, I mean, that's the way it worked out. There was no, no, well, it was an honest process. Did it get messy when the tests came up? Yeah. But it was a, a good, thorough, honest process. They chose who they wanted, this person is a leader, they worked hard to get where they want to be. And again, there's a trust, and these guys know, they're not going to put somebody up there that isn't qualified, they're not going to risk their lives. The only, you know, if, if, might be administrative experience that, that a Lowell police chief might lack, but other than that, they've got all the qualica, all the qualifications that we want in a leader for our fire department. And I just think it'd be a shame if we, we mess with the process. There, there may have been some more options here, I missed that part of the meeting, but I think civil service is the way to keep this. And, again, you know, the 12 years, 13 years that I've been involved in city politics, never peeped from the fire department. They knew who they want, they trust who they put in charge, and that speaks volumes. I mean, these guys have to trust each other. When they go into a fire, if that trust isn't there, it doesn't work.
Thank you, Counsel. I do respect your stance, Counsel, very good, some very good points, but I also agree that we, I can't say we've had a bad fire chief in the last 10, since I can recall, if you will, certainly not. And I don't think anybody intends a nationwide search on a fire ser, we have the talent in the city for a fire chief, there's no two ways about that. So that's not any, I know it's not my intent to outsource, if you will, definitely not. It, it's an internal search, if you will. But to my point again, I just, me, that's only, I'm talking from my point of view, I, I want the manager to be able to have the final, have the final say, but I, I do admire your stance. Counsel Samaras?
Thank you. No, Counsel Belanger is correct, Counsel Leahy, and to Counsel Rourke, your, your statements with process, I mean, you're basically on, but the thing is, life is about change, and the issue is that, yes, they've been doing a good job, but it's, it is a closed shop, and that is a little concerning to me, in a sense of the expectations that we as city councils are receiving from the public in general of what they want, and then the expectations we put down with the sup, to the sup, to the, yeah, former job, to the city manager as to what we want. I don't see this change being that, I don't see this change being harmful to the fire department, I most certainly would not want it to be. I would want it to be a candidate who, we asked of the city manager, that he makes sure that that fire chief will willingly fight for the right equipment for his fireman, the right type of, you know, newer trucks if it has to be, or whatever, training for the fire department, more manpower for the fire department, those are some of the things that I would expect. And in this changing society, I mean, it is a changing society, and I cited the school department, there wasn't any organization, we'll say, tighter or more clothes knit than the school department. Once you became tenured, a bomb couldn't get you out of that position. But the issue is, they made some changes, and the whole idea was to develop a team and have a better team. And that's, I mean, that's my personal experience, that's how I see it, so, if I thought this was bringing harm to the fire department, I wouldn't vote for it. But I, I can see this being something that the citizens of the city could better understand and relate to, the need to have the chief executive officer have the right to select and run his or her department, make the changes that are necessary. And if those changes are not what we like, yes, I mean, we know who to hold accountable, it would be the city manager. But I, I, I see this with the potential to do more good than harm. I don't, I would not want to vote for this as change for the sake of change, or it's the newest idea. But this is something that has been growing throughout the country, this direction, for top administration, and there are more specific requirements of top administration. And the administrator, or the administrators at the various levels have to hold their, we'll say, loyalty on their job to their supervisor, not to a group, because the thing is, I think this would also give the chief the ability to think outside of the box and to better protect his people. That's the way I see it. It's just, what, what we're doing, we're all casting, I think, honest and good opinions here. I mean, we may disagree, but the issue is, what do we see that's best? And there is no easy or one way or one answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair would like to recognize Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think it's important for us all to realize that whether or not the position stays in civil service or goes out of civil service, the city manager still gets to make the final decision. And I am one that really doesn't favor a contract for anybody in the city, so I don't really favor a contract for the city manager, nor do I favor a contract for the police chief, and I probably wouldn't favor a contract for the fire chief either. And I, and I think if it was, I, I think it's really difficult to make a compelling argument just based on the process, that this should be taken out of civil service. If it was really just going to be based on the process, then I think that what we would want to do is adopt one of these options, and just put, just so that there would be more, more taken into account when a police chief was, was chosen. So for me, the whole thing comes down to accountability, and, and I think that, you know, things that have happened recently, you know, the $300,000 in, in extra overtime that was required in the department, that we never really got a, a good answer on, having the, the fire chief attend the departmental meetings that the city manager has on a regular basis, those are issues that, that would be eas, more easily addressed if the position was not in civil service. And so, that's the reason that, that I'm leaning the way that I am, and, and why I think it should be taken out of civil service. It's really different from the way that I expected to, the, the way I usually think about things, but I don't think it has anything to do with the process, I don't think that there's a winning argument to change the, to take it out of civil service just, just based on the process. I think it really ends up being all about accountability.
Thank you, Counsel. Anybody, for starters, the Chair would like to recognize Counsel Mercia, who has joined us. Anybody from the audience like to chime in on this? No? Okay. Counselors? No? Okay. Well, okay, do I, so, councilors, nobody else has anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we adopt, that the, that the subcommittee endorse the city manager's position, that the, or request that the position be taken out of civil service.
A second. Okay. Roll call?
Chairman Belanger?
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Three aces.
There's, there's no other business side move to adjourn.
Second? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.